We will now call the business session of the February 16th, 2021 city council meeting to order at 6:05 PM. On March 16th, 2020, the governor suspended various provisions of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to his state of disaster authority. Change was effective March 16th, 2020 until further notice or until the state of disaster declaration expires. In accordance with physical distancing guidelines and while providing as much transparency as possible, this meeting will not be open to the public. This meeting is being broadcast live at WCCC.TV. The audio is also being recorded. The video and audio recordings will be available to the public. According to the governor and attorney general, statutes that may require face-to-face interaction between members of the public and public officials are suspended, provided however that the governmental body offers alternative methods of communication with their public officials. This includes public comment on agenda items. In an effort to allow for as much public input as possible, those who wish to speak or submit their written comments on a listed agenda item were asked to register with the city secretary's office by 1:00 PM today. Individuals who register to speak on an agenda item must limit their comments to three minutes. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. When called to speak, please state your name for the record. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the city council shall be removed from, shall be removed if directed by the presiding officer. And now, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next on the agenda is to consider the minutes of the February 2nd, 2021 regular council meeting. Are there any corrections? There are no corrections. Those minutes will stand as approved as presented. And next, we will move to public hearing 2021-96. I believe, Jennifer, are you going to be making this presentation?
Yes, sir. Honorable mayor and members of the city council, the findings for public hearing items 2021 96 through 100 are all the same. And so, for efficiency purposes, I'm going to read those findings into the record and those will apply to each of those if council were to pass those resolutions. So in order to prove these items, council must find that the proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, that the proposed use is compatible with the appropriate orderly development of the area in which it is located, that the proposed use would not be more objectionable to neighboring properties because of traffic congestion, noise, fumes, vibrations, or any other characteristics than any use permitted in the zoning district without the grant of a special exception, and that the available community facilities and services, including the road system, providing access to the proposed use are adequate for the proposed use. And so those would apply to any of those items. The first item, mayor, is item 2021-96. Honorable mayor and council, this is a public hearing to consider a resolution to grant a special permit for a short-term rental type two in R1B district on the property described as lots 14B and 15A Block D, South Overlook Edition and known as 4220 Watt Avenue. Based on the development plans submitted and subject to the special provisions and conditions, by a vote of eight to zero, the plan commission recommended approval of the special permit based on the findings I read earlier. Council at, at the work session asked a question, I believe it was council member Sabido, about whether or not there was a map showing the distance from other, other short-term rentals, and that is on page 125 of the packet.
Thank you, Jennifer. Are there any questions for staff? Here now, we will open a public hearing for comments. Did anyone register to speak?
No, sir. I have no one registered to speak for item, Public Hearing 2021-096.
We'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval of the special permit.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Please poll the council.
Holmes?
Hi.
Palmer?
Hi.
Porterood?
Yes.
Fairfield?
Yes.
Sabido?
Yes.
Me?
Yes, that motion carries. And now we'll move to public hearing 2021-97.
Honorable mayor and members of the council, this is a public hearing to consider a resolution to grant a special permit to Joseph L. Craig and Andrea Michelle Craig for a short-term rental type two in an R1B district on property described as Lot 19, Block 5, Coats Edition, known as 1901 Algonquin Avenue, based on the development plan submitted and subject to the special provisions and conditions. By a vote of eight to zero, the plan commission recommended approval of the special permit based on the findings I read earlier.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I've got a question. Jennifer, I think you had sent me an email, but just wanted to clarify, there were a couple of addresses listed for the applicant. Can you verify who, whether the, whether there's going to be someone local managing the property?
Yes, council member Palmer, the owner lives in Temple, but the operator, the person running the short-term rental lives in Woodway.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions for staff?
We will. I'm sorry, mayor, I do just have a quick question. Jennifer, have we made, are we addressing anything with the exterior of the house? And I, we didn't see any, well, I didn't see any pictures of the inside, so I didn't know if there was anything, any upgrade or maintenance that they have to do to the exterior of the house, based on the pictures that we saw?
I do not know the, the answer to that question, council member Sabido. I don't know the answer to that question, as I sit here.
No worries. Thank you.
Anyone tuning in at home right now, I do want to just, I said this at the beginning of our work session, I didn't say this at the beginning of our business session, but everyone knows there's a unprecedented and historic winter storm that our city staff has been dealing with. So some key staff members that traditionally are able to fill some of these questions are unable to join us tonight. So we certainly appreciate city staff's hard work, not only in responding to this unprecedented storm, but also in conducting this meeting tonight. So appreciate all of our staff for filling in and, and understand where we are. Any other questions for staff? Here now, we will.
And council member, I understand that on 97, that there are no requirements about anything on the exterior is my understanding.
Okay. We will open a public hearing for comments. Esmeralda, did anyone register to speak?
Yes, sir. We have two individuals registered to speak. I will move them over. They're actually calling in from the same line, but they will, are each allowed three minutes. We have Joseph and Andrea Craig. Mister and Mrs. Craig, are you on the line?
Can you hear us now?
Yeah, now.
Okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
We are here to answer any questions that might come up. So if there was a specific question about the exterior of the home that we can help answer.
Sure, Hector, did you have any, any questions?
Yes, ma'am, Miss Craig, thank you so much for the opportunity and thank you for being here tonight. I was looking at the exterior of the house and didn't know if you guys plan to do a little bit of work on the exterior of the STR?
Yes, it is a brand-new build, however, it will require some landscaping and, you know, everything else is new. We also had some issues regarding some drainage, and so we, we are working on that, putting in a new fence, that kind of thing. So, yes.
Wonderful. You answered my question. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. and Mrs. Craig? All right, Mr. and Mrs. Craig, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Esmeralda, did anyone else register to speak?
Not for that item, sir.
All right, we will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval of the special permit.
Second.
Any discussion? Please poll the council.
Holmes?
Hi.
Palmer?
Hi.
Porterood?
Yes.
Fairfield?
Yes.
Sabido?
Yes.
Me?
Yes, that motion carries, public hearing 2021-98.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, this is a public hearing to consider a resolution to grant a special permit to Christopher Button for a short-term rental type two in an R1B district on property described as Lot 22, Block 2, Ridge Crest Edition, known as 2217 North 44th Street, based on the development plan submitted and subject to the special provisions and conditions. By a vote of eight to zero, the plan commission recommended approval of the special permit based on the findings I read earlier. And at the work session, council had some questions. One of the questions was whether or not this was a new application or a reapplication. This is a new application. And I have before me an email that Beatrice Wharton, who worked for the planning staff after the plan commission meeting, had forwarded some of the concerns to Mr. Button and his response, and I'm just reading it. It's a response from an email dated February 2nd, 2021. It says, "I have added parking and clearly note in the rules that all parking must be on the driveway. Additionally, it is in the rules that all party, that parties will not be allowed. I do not have a management company. The phone number provided is my direct phone number."
Jennifer, could we make all three of those matters a part of the special permit? Sorry.
I believe that the parking is part of the special permit. And the, providing the phone number for the operator for a part two is part of the special permit already. The parties.
I'm, yeah, the first, the, I'll just say the parking and the number was the ones that was.
I believe those are already part of the special permit.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Jennifer, if this is a new application, were they operating this in STR before today? And that's where the complaints came from?
I don't, I do not know for sure, council person, but that would be my suspicion. But I do not know for sure.
Okay. Thank you. And I know I'm putting you on the spot, so I apologize.
City attorney, follow-up question for Tim. If they didn't previously have a permit and potentially were operating an STR, is there any sort of policy or ramification for operating an STR without the appropriate permit?
Our, our practice and, Deputy City Manager Emerson might want to jump in, but our practice has been, we have an outside service that scours the short-term rental websites to find anybody who's operating, and usually our process is to contact them and have them apply. Obviously, another option is to, is to, is to write a citation to persons who do not apply. And I'm not speaking about this one in particular, because I don't know how this one came about. But either of those options are available to the city, as well as a city even could file a civil lawsuit against a property owner that fails to comply with either one of
But what, what city attorney Richie said is absolutely correct. And in this particular instance, there isn't documented yet, we haven't figured that part out, just because of all the things that have been going on, if there were issues prior to. But we suspect that there's the potential for, that the complaints that have, that were made now can be made directly to the, to the owner or the operator. It's a lot easier, better for us to be in a position for, of enforcement, once that permit is in place.
That was a much better answer than mine, I just want to point out, but thank you. Thank you, Deputy City Manager Emerson.
It's a team sport. Other questions for staff? All right, we will open a public hearing. Did anyone register to speak on this item?
No, sir. We have no one registered to speak for 2021-098.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval of the special permit.
Is there a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just, I will say, I'm very concerned about the activity that has occurred at this property without a STR permit already operating and, and because of that, and just some of the, the things that we've read that, that, that the neighbors have encountered, I cannot support this, this short-term rental.
Any other discussion? I totally hear council member Sabido and absolutely appreciate where he's coming from. Just not to disagree with him, but to, from a different perspective, or why, why I'll be supporting it is, I want to reward people for coming forward and applying for the permits and deciding to, to come into compliance with regulation and, and agree with Deputy City Manager Emerson, that we will be able to regulate any problems that might come from this property, once they are under the regulation of a permit. So that, that, here in council members Sabido certainly, but that's why I'll be supporting it, so.
I know we were, oh, sorry, mayor.
Yeah, I know. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I know we were scheduled to have a work session today on short-term rentals, and perhaps this is a component that we can include when we're able to have this on the agenda next, is when we find out that someone has been operating without a permit, not saying that this is the case here, but when that's the case, how we want that to inform our decision-making process in granting permits feels like an important piece of the puzzle.
I know a planning staff is not with us tonight, but on my three years on the commission, it was pretty common for an applicant to have kind of been caught. More often than not, though, it, it was someone that was unaware, well, we thought there was a good faith basis for them being unaware of the short-term rental ordinance. And so, we tried not to hold it against them on the commission. I know this is the city council, we have our own priorities and with our own processes. And so just with my experience with that, I, I'm not holding it against them in this case, but I do appreciate that we want people complying with the ordinance, absolutely to, to Mayor Protem's point.
Any other discussion? Please poll the council.
Holmes?
Hi.
Palmer?
Hi.
Porterood?
Yes.
Fairfield?
Yes.
Sabido?
No.
Me?
Yes, that motion carries, public hearing 2021-99.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, this is a public hearing to consider a resolution to grant a special permit to Joseph D. Garbelli and Meredith Blake Garbelli for a bed and breakfast homestay establishment in the R1B district on property described as Lot 16, Block A, Keys Creek Edition, known as 100 Creek Ridge Drive, based on the development plan submitted and subject to the special provisions and conditions. By a vote of eight to zero, the plan commission recommended approval of the special permit based on the findings I read earlier.
Any questions for staff? We will open a public hearing. Oh, sorry, council member Palmer?
There was, one of the comments that was listed in the agenda packet raised a concern that if we were to approve something like this, that there could be an unlimited number of other short-term rentals of this type to enter the neighborhood. I just want staff to speak to whether or not that's a reality and how that plays out.
This is actually a bed and breakfast?
Yeah, bed and breakfast.
Yeah, and I'm just not sure about the density requirements for bed and breakfasts. Council, Deputy City Manager Emerson, are you aware? I don't believe there are density requirements. I think it's a special permit that anybody would have to come get. I don't, I don't believe there's density requirements. I apologize, but I don't know that off the top of my head.
That's correct. So that. It's, it's the, the different types, and so that there is, that, that density is not, is not there on this, on this particular one.
So is it then plausible that there could be an unlimited number of bed and breakfasts? And, because I think that was the, the fear that was raised, so I just want to clarify whether or not that's a possibility or not.
Yeah, I, I really want to dig deeper into that one before saying yes or no on that, because I want to make sure that we're sure.
I was thinking there was the same density restriction as there was on STRs, but I'm not 100% sure. Almost sure. I don't, it seemed like there was some density restrictions.
Any other questions for staff?
And council, it's always an option to continue this public hearing, if that's something that is of importance to council.
We will open a public hearing for comments. Esmeralda, I believe we have a couple, or at least one registered speaker, is that right?
We do, we have Mr. Joseph Garbelli, but I cannot find him on the list, so I am reaching out to him.
Okay.
This is Jill.
Hi, Mr. Garbelli, this is Esmeralda, and you are on city council. Did you want to have your three minutes to address public hearing 2021-099?
One more time.
You are, this is Esmeralda in the city secretary's office, and we are at the city council meeting, and you registered to speak on item 2021-099, and you are, the council can hear you right now.
Okay, very good. Okay, so Jill Garbelli lives under Creek Ridge Drive. The reason I registered to speak is to see if anyone had any questions about the rental.
Are there any questions for Mr. Garbelli? I don't believe we have any questions for you, Mr. Garbelli. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Okay, well, very good. We're going to, we're going to conduct the rental in such a way, this, this is our personal house and will be, you know, we are planning on renting to Baylor alumni and people coming down to Magnolia. We will be on property at all times, maintaining the property and maintaining order within the neighborhood. Thank you very much for letting me share, share the, share my thoughts here at the meeting.
Thank you so much, Mr. Garbelli.
Bye-bye.
Esmeralda, is there anyone else registered to speak?
We might have anybody else registered on this item.
And council and mayor, there is a 500-foot spacing requirement for bed and breakfast homestay, so I apologize for not knowing that off the top of my head.
And no problem, Jennifer, at all, and, and even if it was outside the 500 mark, but in this neighborhood, they would still have to come back for a special permit, is that right?
Oh, yes, sir.
All right, if I haven't yet, we will close the public hearing. Is there a motion on this item?
I'll move for approval of the special permit.
Second.
Please, any discussion? Please poll the council.
Holmes?
Hi.
Palmer?
Hi.
Porterood?
Yes.
Fairfield?
Yes.
Sabido?
Yes.
Yes, that motion carries. We will now go to public hearing 2021-100.
Honorable mayor and members of the council, this is a public hearing to consider a resolution granting a special permit to WCW Waco 2 LLC for an automobile car washing establishment in a C2 district on property described as Lot 25, Block 228 Reynolds Edition, known as 708 North 9th Street. Based on the development plan submitted and subject to the special provisions and conditions, by a vote of eight to zero, the plan commission recommended approval of the special permit based on the findings I read earlier. And at the council meeting, there were some questions about the traffic study. The answer to that question is that the traffic engineer did not look at the locate, other two locations. They weren't required to do that. The, but the location on Valley Mills is located there by right, and so because it was by right and not with a special permit, no traffic impact analysis was required prior to that car wash opening. Whereas here, there has been a traffic impact analysis done for this location.
Thank you, excuse me. Thank you, Jennifer. Are there any other questions for staff? We will open a public hearing on this item. Did anyone register to speak?
Yes, sir. We have a Mr. J. Trenton, Trenton, and I'm going to promote him as a panelist now. Mr. Toronto, are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes to address the council on your item. Can you hear us? I'm asking him to unmute.
Is that better?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm so sorry. We're developing the project, and I'm here to answer any questions anyone might have on our operations and, and on our facility. So it's kind of a straightforward car wash. It won't do the same amount of traffic as our one on Valley Mills, but it'll, because it's a smaller facility.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I, I have a few questions. So I've reached, I've heard from a number of neighborhood residents, and like anything, there are people that are in support of this, and there are people that have challenges with this. Some of the challenges that I've heard from neighbors are fear that there will be increased traffic, knowing that, from neighbors that live there, they've noted that there have been a number of accidents kind of near that intersection historically. So we'd just love to hear more about traffic mitigation off of a busy road like Waco Drive. I, I read the traffic analysis report, but wanted to hear, just anecdotally, any thoughts that you have, knowing that the Valley Mills location, I have noticed a good deal of traffic backed up there.
Well, we have an inner, we have a symbolized intersection at this particular location. We're only, we're only doing a right out on Waco Drive directly, and anyone else who wants to go the other direction would have to come out on the ninth and, and use the symbolized intersection to make a left turn. We're only, our traffic report indicates that we're, we're going to have about, I think, 67 vehicles on average an hour coming in, so I don't think it's going to be, the traffic is going to be really that tough. This is not a Valley Mills location. It's, this is a smaller car wash. We only have 15 stations for vacuuming in it, and I think it'll, it'll do a nice business, but it, it isn't going to do the kind of business that we do over in Valley Mills.
Awesome, thank you. And then two other questions from residents that are behind the property. There was, I received some questions about lighting. What's, what will lighting look like after hours?
Well, we generally don't light our buildings. We, we do light the parking lot. We have lights on our stanchions. They are shrouded. We don't operate at night, just so you know. We're open from seven, 7:30 in the morning through about seven o'clock at night, latest, when it gets dark, we close, and we don't operate. But we do light the, the parking lot at night, all night long. But everything is shrouded. There won't be any lights that just flow out from the stanchions.
Perfect. And then my last question is, I imagine this isn't the case, but I've heard some concerns about noise. Will there be any sort of music playing in the parking lot or in the, in the unit?
We do have, we do have some music, but we can control how loud it is. And it's usually at the vacuum stanchions that we have it. But we, like I said, if it's a problem, we just turn it down. Or turn it off.
Thank you.
Um, and follow-up to that, are there, will there be attendance at all times? So in case it's not your music that, you know, that you're piping is the issue, but those of the patrons, is there someone who would monitor that and encourage people to turn it down? You know, are there signs? I've seen that in some other car washes like that, so can you speak to that, please?
Sure. We have, usually have two to three employees at all times when we're operating. Our vacuums are not operable at night, so when we go home, we turn them off. So. So if there is a problem with that, our employees can obviously talk to people and we do talk to our customers all the time. We normally have somebody out at our POS Islands, point of sale machines, pretty much all day long. And then we have somebody at the loading station on the inside to load the cars. And then we have somebody walking around, you know, cleaning the trash cans and, and cleaning up site. So normally don't have more than three employees at a given time onsite and, and sometimes we'll only have two, but we always have at least two.
One last thought along those lines. One of the interesting components of this location is, it is owned commercial. Obviously, this is inappropriate use, but it does back up into a residential neighborhood. So would just love for y'all as being good neighbors to just be really conscious of the noise limit of both customers and your business, like you were saying that you're committed to, being cognizant that there are a number of families that live within, you know, half a block of this proposed establishment.
Well, if anything should happen, we're, we're, they need to, we need to speak with them. We hope they'll approach us and talk to us about it because we can fix our, you know, what we do. And we do. We serve, we believe in serving our customers. So it's important that we get along with everyone.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Esmeralda, did anyone else register to speak?
Yes, sir. Let me pull it up. It's actually Ms. Vicky Claras and she submitted a item for me to read into the record. And I guess I should give myself three minutes. Just in case. Oh, gosh. Here we go. We are posed to having built, having it built at the designated location for the following reasons. Safety and traffic congestion are two major concerns my family and neighbors nearby us have. At the Planning Commission meeting on January 26, 2021, Jay Tarrant, Tarranton called in that traffic or safety was not an issue. Yet, as a footnote to his comment, this was the scene on Ninth and Waco Drive in front of the proposed site on the afternoon of January 26 prior to the meeting. Three small children crying and screaming in their car amid the smoke rising from their car. Two to three fire trucks arriving along with two ambulances and police cars. For those of us gathered outside in the heavy traffic being diverted, it was an alarming and disturbing sight. In recent years, once there were three to four accidents within a month on Ninth Street and Waco Drive in front of the location at the previous barbecue site. Another time, someone turned onto Waco Drive from Ninth Street and damaged a streetlight. Another time, someone's car on Ninth was hit from behind and swerved into the brick wall, the borders, the sidewalk and the yard in front of our house on the corner of Ninth and Waco Drive. We are also concerned about noise issues. In addition to the speeding traffic, vehicle sounds and sometimes loud music that already exist on Waco Drive, we and my neighbors are concerned that it would create a setting in which, in which people would want to hang out at night and play loud music after hours or cause other disturbances to the neighborhood at the site of the car wash. All of the above reasons, the question, all the above raises the question of whether the Plan Commission, Planning Commission considered how a car wash established, establishment would contribute to the quality of life in the neighborhood, given all of the challenges and issues cited above, and now presents the same issues and challenges to the Waco City Council. Respectfully, Ms. Vicky Claras. And Mayor, you may also provide a rebuttal if, since it was the applicant you spoke to previously.
Absolutely. Is he still on the line?
I think so. Yes, he is.
Would you like to rebut that, sir?
Jay, are you on the, the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I don't know that I can rebut what was said from the perspective of if a traffic accident occurs at the intersection, there isn't much we can do about that. Sounds like that was a pretty bad accident that occurred. But we are taking, you know, we're trying to be careful. Our traffic report indicates that we can get people in and out of the site safely. And I'm certain that, that if there are traffic accidents out on Waco Drive, you know, the police are going to come and take care of it. But I'm, I'm not sure that we would be the cause. We certainly weren't the cause on this one that you mentioned. That's all I have.
Any, any questions for the applicant? All right, we will close. Any other registered speakers, Esmeralda?
No, sir.
All right, we will close the public hearing. Is there a motion on this?
I'll move for approval of the special permit.
Second.
New discussion. All right, please pull the council.
Holmes.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Porteru.
Yes.
Fairfield.
Yes.
Edo.
Yes.
Meek.
Yes, that motion carries. Public hearing 2021-101.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this is a public hearing to consider a resolution to approve the final planned unit development for property described as 22094 acre tract of land located in the L. Marble Survey, abstract 580 in the city of Waco, McLinnan County, Texas, being the portion of the remainder of a called 151.173 acre tract described in a deed to LG Callan LLC, recorded under McLinnan County Clerk's document 2015023163 of the Official Public Records in McLinnan County, Texas, and located on Panther Way between Ritchie Road and Farm Miller Road, Phase 2 being located northwest of the intersection of Halifax Drive and Slocum Court. By a vote of eight to zero, the Plan Commission recommended approval of the final plan based on the following findings and conditions. The final PUD plan is consistent with the approved concept PUD plan, conditions of the approved concept PUD plan and requirements of the PUD ordinance. The circulation plan, public facilities and services plan, preliminary architectural plan and site development landscaping plan included in the final PUD plan are adequate. Conditions, the property must be platted, meeting requirements of the PUD and subdivision ordinance before the issues of issuance of building permits. Per the approved concept plan, an eight-foot fence shall be installed along the northern perimeter of the development that is adjacent to the Stanford Oaks subdivision.
Questions for staff? We will open a public hearing for comments. Anyone registered to speak on this?
Mayor and Council, no, no one has registered to speak on this item.
All right, we will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
A move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Please pull the council.
He's gonna, Holmes.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Porteru.
Yes.
Fairfield.
Yes.
Edo.
Yes.
Meek.
Abstain. That motion carries. Public hearing 2021-102.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this is a public hearing to consider an ordinance abandoning a portion of right-of-way located along Highway 84 Waco Drive, described as being a 0.027 acre tract of land, 1,169 square feet in the city of Waco, McLinnan County, Texas, and being a remainder of a portion of Barnard Avenue, as shown on the platte recorded in volume 353, page 592 of the deed records in McLinnan County, Texas. By a vote of eight to zero, the Plan Commission recommended approval of the, approval of the abandonment based on the following condition, findings and condition. The findings are, public use of the right-of-way is not required for the proper flow of traffic or for emergency vehicle access to the area. Number two, utility access for surrounding properties is not adversely impacted by the abandonment of this right-of-way. And the condition is, a general utility use must be retained for the area of the abandoned right-of-way.
Questions for staff? All right, we will open the public hearing for comments. Did anyone register to speak?
No, sir. Nobody registered to speak on this item.
Very good. Is there a motion? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion preferable.
Sorry, second.
Got a couple of motions in a couple of seconds.
Okay, first by Councilmember Palmer and a second by Councilmember Sabido. Is that correct?
That's correct. Okay, any discussion?
While we have St. Albans on the table, just want to shout out that we're really grateful for them offering, opening up their doors today as a warming center, as we are with all of the other entities across the community. But this just feels really reflective of the fact that they're good neighbors to us, that they are taking care of our residents. And for those that know this tiny little space of land on their wide bit of property, I really don't think we're going to see a whole lot of change, but excited to see this developed. And again, just really thankful for them opening their doors of warmth and electricity in the midst of unprecedented weather.
I'd like to echo Councilmember Palmer's comments and also just thankful for St. Albans' role in the Austin Avenue Neighborhood Association area. They have often hosted the meetings and have been wonderful community partners, as she suggested.
Any other discussion? All right, please pull the council.
Holmes.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Porteru.
Yes.
Fairfield.
Yes.
Sabido.
Yes.
Meek.
Yes, that motion carries. Public hearing 2021-103.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, this is a public hearing to consider an ordinance rezoning from C3 to R3C on property described as lot five, block P, Royalton Edition, known as 9114 Royal Lane. By a vote of eight to zero, the Plan Commission recommended approval of this request based on the following findings. The proposed zoning is in keeping with the land use component of the comprehensive plan. The public infrastructure is adequate to provide for uses allowed in the R3 zoning district. The property meets all the area and width requirements of the R3Z, R3C zoning district. There is R3 zoning in the vicinity of the subject property.
Are there any questions for staff? Okay, we will open a public hearing. Did anyone register to speak?
No, sir. No one registered to speak on this item.
We will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion for approval on first reading.
Second.
Please pull the, any discussion? Please pull the council.
Holmes.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Porteru.
Yes.
Fairfield.
Yes.
Edo.
Yes.
Meek.
Abstain and we will move to our consent agenda now. Esmeralda, remind me which items we received.
Sure. And if you'd like, you can begin with the resolutions and then do consent agenda, but I'll leave that up to you and the council. The first, we have resolution 104, 112, 113 and 114.
Okay, let's, so resolutions 2021-104, we've received a comment, so we will be pulling this from the consent agenda. Is there, is the registered speaker on the line?
Yes, let me get them on. It is Teresa Harris. There she is. Ms. Harris, you are now a panelist and can unmute and use your camera if you'd like. And you have three minutes to speak. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. I first want to thank the council for upholding my right to speak and removing this from the consent agenda. It's my hope that you will each listen with a willingness to be changed by what you hear, despite the fact that this agenda item was on the consent agenda. I find the conviction, conviction to speak against this resolution in a quote from Thomas Jefferson. "The people of every country are the only safeguardians of their own rights." And I'm asking that you join me as fellow citizens in safeguarding our rights, the rights of life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness, along with our rights assured under the Bill of Rights. You may wonder how I can even question this policy since obviously you and every other policymaker on the planet are, are seeking to protect our right to life since hundreds of thousands of people are dying. I question this policy because we're almost a year into this pandemic and we can now compare all-cause year-over-year deaths and see that there is no change. Let me repeat that. There is no change in the year-over-year all-cause mortality deaths. And I'm asking for your help in changing our current circumstances because I know the impact that public policy can have. Public policymakers, including the WHO and the CDC, have made sweeping changes in definitions and policies that have landed us in a global pandemic with no year-over-year increase in all-cause mortality, where rights are being stripped from citizens across the globe. And I hope that you will join me in asking why, why are we, what, how do we find ourselves in this circumstance? And I have to say that I have, I've questioned this and, and researched and looked into and tried to understand why. And I believe that our regulatory bodies and policymaking agencies are captured by the industries that they were created to regulate. And that the, these policies that are being enacted are for the benefit of a few. They're not about health. They are not about our well-being. They're, they're not about protecting our freedoms or supporting humanity. These, these policies are negatively affecting not just my life, but the lives of billions of people on our planet. And we don't have to walk in lockstep with the Rockefeller Foundation or allow the Gates Foundation to train us on the appropriate responses to a pandemic.
Ms. Harris, your three minutes have expired. Do you want to finish up your comment?
I just asked that you would each look carefully and, and review and think for yourselves. Use your critical thinking skills and do your own research. And stop following public policy that's top-down from whom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Hey, Ms. Harris, is there anyone else who registered to speak on resolution 104? Esmeralda, is there anyone else registered to speak? Sorry.
Sorry, no, sir. There is not anyone else.
Very good. Is there a motion on this item?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
I didn't catch that second. I'm sorry.
It was Fairfield.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll chime in here. Just want to thank Teresa for joining us and also reiterate that we are a council deeply committed to evidence-based practice and research and are consistently spending dozens of hours talking with subject matter experts, both locally and throughout our state and our nation, in guiding us in making decisions that we believe are in the best interest of, of our neighbors, but appreciate the, the dissent and her imitation to thoughtfulness and want to be very clear that we are all critical thinkers, deeply committed to making decisions that we believe are the best decisions with the information we have available.
Just echo that. I agree. I think this is something that we need to continue to evaluate. And the good news is we have vaccinations that are in the queue and obviously we, we are excited for the day when we'll see more members of our community vaccinated. So we will be continuing to review this carefully. This is not a rubber stamp item and as the, the landscape continues to change here in Waco, we're going to look at that closely. My, my approach has been to listen to local doctors, local trusted doctors of all political parties and stripes, but that are medical experts, as well as other members of our community who have businesses and skin in the game and, and kind of weigh that out based, based on what our local healthcare community and business community say. And with that in mind, trying to seek as, as much wise counsel here locally as I can. I feel comfortable. that in mind, trying to seek as much wise counsel here locally as I can. I feel comfortable moving forward on this. Any other discussion? Please pull the council.
Holmes.
Hi.
Palmer.
Hi.
Porterood.
Porterood.
Butterood.
Yes.
Fairfield.
Yes.
Edo.
Yes.
Meek.
Yes, that motion carries. I would like to pull, and I think a couple of other council members would like to pull Resolution 221-105 from the consent agenda as well. So we'll do that at this time, and I'll start by asking for a motion on this. Is there?
Approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry. The old guy starts out first, and then I'll work around the young guys. I'm going to say because I think we're all thrilled about this. And again, thank you to Chief Holt for the great job he did as Police Chief, and then Chief Gensh as well, as filling in here two times in a row, and has done a great job, has left this police department in great shape. Again, going to the resume, which is my nature, just to look at objectively, how do these resumes stack up of the, of all the folks we ever looked at. And when you see that Dr. Victorian, first of all, is a doctor, and she has her master's also in criminal justice, just that jumped out at me, as somebody who wants to, to improve themselves and get to the highest level that they possibly can, and this is going above and beyond. The fact that she had, she was Assistant Chief, Division Commander, had worked her way up is just very impressive. And in just getting into the trenches earlier in career, where she was undercover investigator, gang task force officer, patrol officer, night shift murder squad, you know, in internal affairs, she's done a lot of different things. I'm just very impressed with, with the resume. And then on top of that, showing values of teamwork, relational policing, community policing, which this council is very supportive of. And just, again, one of my objectives as a councilman is to provide our city's citizens best-in-class, a best-in-class police force. And I think we found the perfect person to lead that police force in Dr. Victorian. I support her with that reservation and looking forward to working with Dr. Victorian. Still don't know whether to call her Doctor, Chief, or Chief Doctor.
I'll piggyback off of Councilmember Holmes. I am very excited about the appointment of Dr. Victorian. Not only do I believe that she is going to be excellent for our city and community, but I also believe strongly in her leadership that she will bring to the Waco Police Department. Speaking of resumes, if you look at her, you will see that she is qualified for the job, up to the challenge, and has an academic background that just placed her at the forefront as the list of interviewees. And so I'm very excited about the opportunity of, of her making Waco her home, and I'm very excited about the direction that our city is moving in and heading in. And so I just want to, once again, welcome her and, and excited about what's to come in the near future for our city.
Of course, want to echo my colleagues and their, and their praise and their excitement and their enthusiasm. I am very excited about the historic nature of this appointment. I believe that soon to be Chief, Victorian will, brings a wealth of experience from her time in Houston PD, from all the way down to patrol, all the way up to senior administration. Obviously, she's been trained at the FBI Academy and has a stellar educational resume. But I think more than that, her approach to community policing, building trust, working on vexing mental health and criminal law adjudication issues, as well as working with the myriad of law enforcement partners here in McLennan County in the state, bringing a lot of great experience will just show what a big win this is for our city, and we look forward to working with her and supporting her going forward.
Since I almost lost it earlier, I will just say yes to Dr. Chief Victorian. So thrilled to have her on board and to watch Waco thrive under her leadership.
I absolutely agree, Councilmember Palmer. It is our pleasure to support the hire of Dr. Cheryl Victorian. One of the things that City Manager Ford mentioned at our work session, we had an opportunity to speak with her, is her commitment to innovation. And I know that we, as, as a city, are looking to go forward and grow with safety and community as our priority, and that is especially necessary in our police force. We are so grateful for former Chief Holt, who has matriculated to the City Manager position and Chief Gensh for his work, but we are so excited about Dr. Victorian making Waco her home. I mentioned before that we recently honored the memory of Alice Pollard, who was Waco's first African-American female police officer. And knowing that, knowing Ms. Pollard the way I did, she would be so proud of this moment in particular, that leaders, the African-American women who serve in Waco PD now will see, have an opportunity to see what advancement in leadership looks like. The young, the young women of our community, young men and women of our community, of all races, but especially those African-American young men and women, will have an opportunity to see advancement in leadership in PD. We, we need to grow our own. And so in order, we have now had the opportunity to be what we see. So I look forward to the work that Dr. Victorian will put into our community. She has said several times in the community interviews that she is ready to meet with our neighborhood associations, to meet with her, her team and her, her officers. I love the fact that we've already established, you know, that she is committed to this force and making them, making them her own. I think that the timing is perfect, because we could, we, we, we didn't, we didn't have what we knew Waco needed at our, when we did our first Police Chief search. So we went back out, and we were blessed with the opportunity for what I believe is best for Waco. So we are excited to welcome Dr. Victorian home.
Thanks to all council members. I'll wrap up and just kind of echo what's already been said. Everyone's covered it so well. I want to echo the thanks to Chief Gensh and Chief Holt. Our force is in a healthy place, and that's because of both of your stable leadership. Our community's in a more healthy place because of your stable leadership, and we thank you for that. Dr. Victorian is such an exciting addition to our community. First, because of, as has been referenced, the sterling resume and references, an incredibly qualified candidate, the best applicant we had, who was recommended highly by everyone that our city leadership was able to speak with. My goal was for our city manager Bradley Ford to find a chief that would ensure Waco will be a safe city, and can also build trust with our community members and our Waco police officers. And Dr. Victorian is the person for that job. I want to commend City Manager Ford for pulling together a community panel. It's ultimately his decision, but he knew it was a big decision. So he worked to pull in community members to hear directly from the applicants that were applying for this job. That panel included representatives of our police association, that represents the interest of our local police officers, as well as a wide diverse array of other members of our community who are representing different interests in our, in our community, in our city. And all of these groups agreed, or at least I can say, community members and representation from our police association that are representing our officers, agreed that Chief Victorian is the person for, to serve as Waco's Police Chief, that this is, this is going to be the leader of this department that can really do great and excellent work. And so just to echo what my co-council members have said, welcome home, Chief Victorian. We welcome you to Waco. So with that, we have some, had some discussion. Please pull the council.
Holmes. Councilmember Holmes.
Hi.
Palmer.
Hi.
Porterood.
Yes.
Fairfield.
Yes.
Edo.
Proudly, yes.
Meek.
Yes, that motion carries. The next item is Resolution 2021-112. Do we have a registered speaker for this item?
We do. We have Janine Sisak, who has registered to speak on both Resolutions 2012 and 114. So I'll let her in and then let her know she has three minutes to speak on both items.
Is she speaking on? Okay, yeah.
Janine, are you there?
Yes, hi, I'm here now. Can you hear me? That's the important part.
Yes, Janine, you have three minutes to address both resolutions.
Okay. Thank you, council. Good evening, council, mayor. Thank you. I'm going to speak on both the issues as directed, but I want to start with kind of the, the more pressing one. And to thank the council for reconsidering the two-point resolution issue. I know at the working group last week, there was reluctance to grant it to either of the two projects, so we're pleased that you're considering it tonight. I want to remind everyone that the request that our company has made, DMA Development Company, for Fifth Street Lofts, is that we be granted resolution language that recognizes our project as the one that contributes more than any other to the city's revitalization efforts. From the working session earlier, we really realized that this group is leaning towards granting the two extra points to Page Estates, because it is serving a senior population due to demonstrated need for senior housing. What troubles me a little bit about this is that no discussion has occurred regarding which project results in more reinvestment for the city of Waco, which is what the resolution language requires. Fifth Street Lofts is an urbanist workforce housing development that enhances a vacant city block in downtown Waco and represents a $20 million investment. Page Estates is a senior-only development community that represents a $12.9 million investment. And so by picking that development based on who is served, rather than what it does for revitalization efforts in downtown Waco, misses the mark a bit in terms of what this particular resolution requires. With regard to community engagement, DMA met and exceeded all of the city of Waco's stated requirements for public engagement. We were transparent about what we proposed on this important site. We followed the stated procedures and deadlines, and we made ourselves readily and repeatedly available for further discussion. We will continue trying to engage conversation about our proposal in the coming year. We just asked that the city of Waco consider establishing a policy similar to the one it has regarding support resolutions regarding this two-point revitalization issue. We just hope that all developments in the future be given equal consideration and access, and that such issues are decided on the merits. Still, we appreciate your consideration, and we're pleased that you're picking one of these two worthwhile developments for the extra two points. A quick note about the program, because this came up last week, but the tax credit program does not allow two developments to be funded in the same census tract. So I want to be clear that only one of these two deals will succeed in getting funding. We just asked that if you do give the other two points to Page Estates, that you give us a support resolution, because we think our project is valuable and brings a lot of reinvestment potential to downtown Waco. And just know that if you give us support and them support, but you give them the two points, they still win. We just want to proceed, because, you know, we've put a lot of time and effort into this site and just want your support. So we respectfully ask for that, and that concludes my comments. Thank you again.
Thank you, Janine, so much for your comments. Any questions for Janine? Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Admiral, just to confirm, she was speaking for both items 112 and 114, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, we will, is there a motion on resolution?
We have another speaker for both of those.
I'm sorry about that.
I'm sorry, no. Mark Gilbert. Mr. Gilbert.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes to address both resolutions 112 and 114.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is Mark Gilbert, also with DMA Companies. Janine Sisak's my colleague, and she, she covered all of our points. I just wanted to be available if you did have any questions. And of course, thank you for consideration of support for both. So thanks so much.
Any questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark. We appreciate you joining us today. Are there any other speakers for either, for Resolution 112?
Right, no, we don't have any more speakers for 112.
All right. Very good. We will then, is there a motion on Resolution 2021-112?
I just have one question for staff. Is that okay, Mayor? If we approve 112, it's just a voice of support, or it's resolution of support. It's not, 114 is the other one where we show the preference of one over the other. So approving this one is?
That is correct, council member.
Okay. Thank you. You answered my question. I will then move to approve this resolution.
Second. Any discussion? Please pull the council.
Holmes.
Hi.
Palmer.
Hi.
Porterood.
Yes.
Fairfield.
Yes, sorry.
Sabido.
Yes.
Meek.
Yes, that motion carries. And then we also have Resolution 2021-114. Are there any other registered speakers for this matter, Admiral?
Yes, sir. We have Michael Ash, who's registered to speak. Interestingly enough, he's registered to speak for 114 and 113, so he'll get three minutes to address both.
Good evening, Mr. Ash.
Mr. Ash, are you there?
I see your name, but you appear to be muted, Mr. Ash.
Unmuted now?
Nope, you're not muted now.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. Also appreciate your willingness to reconsider the issue of the resolutions, particularly the resolution as to which project contributes more. Just to talk real briefly about a couple of the issues that were brought up in the work session, I think that Councilmember Porterood, you brought up a question about Freedom's Path, and whether your decisions with regard to our project have any impact on Freedom's Path. The answer to that is no, they will not. Freedom's Path, because it's a supportive housing project, will be head and shoulders above the other two projects. So the only way that Freedom's Path does not get credit is if they make some sort of mistake. The decisions you make with regard to our projects are not going to make any difference on that. We talked briefly at the work session. I didn't talk much about our company. I work for a company called JES Devco. It's part of a family of companies. We do the development, we'll do the construction, we'll do the management. We also will syndicate and bringing in the financing and the credits for this project. So we will be responsible for this project from cradle to grave, and not only will it be from cradle to grave, it'll be from cradle to grave for long past the end of my life. One of our arms is a management company. We have a long-term interest in holding it, so we will not be selling this property. This is something that we will be a long-term partner in the community for. The project itself, you've heard a little bit about, it's 64 units of housing targeted towards the seniors. It's located at the roughly northwest corner of Cleveland and South 11th Street, where the Cruz Market is right now. We're buying the property from the Cruz family. I've come with the negotiations from them. They had decided to sell before we bought it, so we're not forcing them out of business, not forcing the market to close. That was a decision they made before we approached them. One of the questions that came up was outreach, and just wanted to talk a little bit about outreach. I've talked to a lot of nonprofits and neighborhood organizations, trying to make sure that they're available as a resource for our residents, and trying also to make sure that we are available as a resource for their clients. So just to give you a real quick idea of some of the organizations I've talked to, and I'm not going to say that all of these have talked back to me, some of them have not called back, but the organizations that I've reached out to include the Waco Police Department have talked with Commander Wallace about the crime-free about the Crime Free Housing Program, the Area Agency on Aging, Texas AgriLife in terms of community gardens, the Waco Housing Authority, Downtown Neighborhood Association, the American Legion, Disabled American Vets, Creative Waco and Cultural Arts Fest. We're trying to find a way to bring public art in here. And one of the things we're really trying to do is try to preserve a little bit of the neighborhood as it changes. We've also talked with the Baylor Institute of Oral History about coming over and working with our residents about doing that. And Dr. Stephen Sloan has indicated an interest in that. Have also reached out to the Centex Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, First Baptist Church in La Puerta, Caritas, Meals on Wheels, Salvation Army, Hands of Mercy, Veterans One Stop, Grassroots Community. So really trying to develop the relationships that'll benefit our residents long-term in this property. Dealing specifically with the request of the resolutions and why you ought to pick one over the other, the issue is which contributes more. It's not which invests more, which.
Mr. Ash, your three minutes for those items has expired, so you may want to wrap up your comments.
I sure will. It's not which invests more, it's which contributes more. I think the site we are looking at is more appropriate for senior housing. You've heard testimony from Milet Hopping or information from Milet Hopping about senior housing and the need for senior housing, and she's also indicated that we would be a good cooperative property with her to help with your senior residents. So again, I thank you for your time. I apologize for running over a little bit. A lot of information I wanted to get to, and I probably should have spent a little less time talking about who we've talked to, but thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. We appreciate it. Are there any questions for Mr. Ash? All right. Is there anyone else registered to speak on Resolution 2021-113 or 114?
No, no, sir.
All right, we will pull Resolution 2021-113 from the consent agenda. Is there a motion on that item?
Motion for approval.
Okay.
Any discussion?
I just want to note that I'm really grateful for the work that they did in connecting with all the stakeholders across the community. That, that's, that's, that's going above and beyond. That's, that's the kind of neighborliness and thoughtfulness and outreach that we love to see. So great work.
Councilmember Palmer, you, you beat me to the punch. I was going to say thank you to Mike Ash and the company that he represents. They have done, in my opinion, their due diligence and reaching out to the community, reaching out to the Neighborhood Association, reaching out to the nonprofits and organizations to make sure that they get a good feel for the community and the need for the community. The needs that the community has, I should say. And so I just really want to commend them for their, their due diligence and all the work that they have done. This has been a project in the works for over, well over, closer to two years now. And so I'm sure they're very happy that this is moving forward. So, so just thank you to them.
Any other discussion? Please pull the council.
Holmes.
Hi.
Palmer.
Hi.
Buttered.
Yes.
Fairfield.
Yes.
Rita.
Yes.
Meek.
Yes, that motion carries. And Resolution 2021-114 was also pulled from the consent agenda. Is there a motion on this item?
Motion for approval as well.
Let me, wait, let me back up. The, the resolution gives you an option, so the motion for approval needs, if you choose to pass this resolution, needs to pick which one is going to get that designation.
So I will make the motion to, motion for approval to give Page Estates the wording that this is, that brings the most to the project, or the area, I should say.
Okay.
Does that give you what you need, Jennifer?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Sabita.
Any discussion on this? All right, please pull the council.
Holmes.
Hi.
Palmer.
Hi.
Buttered.
Yes.
Fairfield.
Yes.
Sabita.
Yes.
Meek.
Yes, that motion carries.
Before we move on, can I confirm who was the second on that item? I had a.
It was either Kelly or Councilmember Palmer.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The consent agenda consists of Resolutions 221-104 through 220. What did I say? The consent agenda consists of Resolutions 2021-104 through 2021-120, with the exceptions of Resolutions 2021-104, 105, 112, 113, and 114. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion for approval on consent agenda. Sorry, Councilmember Buttered.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please pull the council.
Holmes.
Hi.
Palmer.
Hi.
Buttered.
Yes.
Fairfield.
Yes.
Sabita.
Yes.
Meek.
Yes, that motion carries. There are no ordinances for consideration. We'll now, in the hearing of visitors, during the hearing of visitors section of the agenda, we will provide an opportunity for the public to present concerns or address issues that are not matters for consideration listed on the agenda. Council is unable to conduct discussion, but we will listen, ask staff to look into concerns and provide follow-up. When called to speak, please state your name for the record. Each speaker must limit comments to three minutes. Each person making personal and pertinent or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the city council, shall be removed, directed by the presiding officer. Are there any registered speakers for the hearing of visitors?
No, Mayor, we don't have any registered speakers for hearing of visitors.
We will now close the hearing of visitors. Are there any council member reports on committees, boards, commissions, or liaison visits?
Mayor Meek, I don't have a council report, but I did want to end the meeting in honor of the passing away of the Alta Vista Neighborhood Association President Dave Emlee. Mr. Emlee passed away on the 2nd of February this year after a few weeks battling COVID. And number one, I just wanted to offer my condolences to the Emlee family. I know that they, they're going through, through their time right now, and so our prayers and thoughts are with them. But I also want to celebrate all of the work that Mr. Emlee has done, that did in our community. Mr. Emlee was a huge supporter of the Alta Vista Neighborhood Association. He was definitely one of their most active members, even to the point where he was the president for the last few years. And in fact, one of the first people that welcomed my wife and I when we first moved into the neighborhood. And so I just want to really just honor his memory. Thank his family for allowing him to be so active, not only in our community, but he was very active in his church. And so I just really want to offer my condolences to the family and celebrate the life of Mr. Dave Emlee. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sabita. Anyone else?
I would also like to just quickly thank Highland Baptist for also opening their doors as a warming center. Really just grateful to belong to a city and to a district that has churches and faith communities that are so generous to our neighbors. So I had, I mentioned St. Albans before, but would be remiss if I didn't also mention Highland Baptist.
Are there any requests, anyone else, or any requests for future agenda items? I just want to close by saying how much I appreciate our city staff who've been working around the clock the last several days, literally around the clock. And just know that with all of the issues that our community is facing in this moment, we are doing everything we can to proactively address those concerns. You can learn more on our website, which is waco-texas.com, or our social media accounts, the City of Waco Public Information social media accounts. And several council members also have social media accounts and are posting updates regarding weather-related concerns in real time as we get those. We will continue to work hard to communicate on all of the issues regarding this weather storm, and know that our hearts and prayers are with you. And if you do have any specific questions or concerns, then I will offer my email address, which is dylan.meek@wacotx.gov, also available on our website. Feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions or concerns. Our city will work hard to bring clarity or resolution to anything we can. So again, thank you so much for our community rallying together in this difficult season. And a, and a specific shout out to our city staff, not only for ensuring this meeting went forward today so that we could conduct good city business and, and move forward with many of the items that we needed to, but also for their, the countless hours of works that they've been putting in the last several days. So we thank you to everyone. Please stay safe, stay off the roads. And our thoughts and prayers are with this community in the days ahead. There being no further business, we will adjourn the meeting at 7:25 PM. Thank you.